Call the meeting total at the record show this is a regular city council meeting held on Monday, October 16th. All members of council are present and the press has been duly notified. Would everyone please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel is going to remain standing for a moment of silence. You are welcome to join us. You do not have to.
I'd like to ask that we please remember all those that are in harm's way in the fires in California and who have lost everything and even some people their lives.
Thank you. Item number one on there is a, on the agenda is a joint planning, a joint public hearing with the Planning Commission and that is to amend the game on PDD, to rezone and add tax map number 644-0000043 from RUD in the county to PDD in the city. And that goes to Chris Leonard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Susan Britt, would you like to give us a brief update on that, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Counsel. Tax map number 644-0000043 is intended to be added to Village E at the game on planned development district. The addition of this property will allow the residential portion of the PDD to be located closer to the existing residential along Stonecrest Boulevard. There will be no additional dwelling units than what is already permitted in the currently approved PDD. By adding this parcel to Village E, it will also free up acreage in the mixed-use villages to be used for more commercial. Staff believes that the annexation and rezoning of this property is appropriate as it is consistent with the 2015-2025 comprehensive plan and will assist the city in meeting the goals outlined in the plan. To reiterate, there's no change in the planned development district standards. The residential dwelling units are still limited to 160 single-family units. This addition of this acreage will, as I said, allow for more commercial in the mixed-use areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Is there any public comment? Was there anyone signed up for public comment? I didn't see anyone.
The only one I had on, yeah, I hear public comments was on the council sheet, which is for, but it's the game on situation. So if the person, Gus, if you want to come speak now, you're welcome to do so. Gus, would you do me a favor? Just state your name and your address.
Gus, my unit is 376 Calming Way. I don't know if I'm asking the right question at this because I think the residences have already been approved, so it may not be related to this annexation request and the change in zoning. But is there any way to guarantee or was there anything to guarantee that they can't build these 410 houses or 410 single-family units and then walk away?
So maybe to correct that, it's 160 single-family units and then there's 250 which will be multifamily apartments over commercial businesses that will evolve out of the, out of the development.
Right. So I mean, I know that that's going to be built first. Is there anything that would keep the developer from, from building and then not doing the commercial development?
I mean, I could, I can say that from a practical standpoint, is there, no, is the short answer. On the flip side of that, the zoning is in place currently, so no additional units could be built outside of that. If they, it's my understanding in several meetings with the developer and their team, they have a soil issue, if you want to call it that, site balancing. They've got an excess of dirt on the residential, that Village E portion you see on the map, that they need to use on the mixed-use commercial areas so they can spend upwards of a million-plus dollars on hauling that off and not using it or move it to the other parts of the development and develop. They will be submitting a grading plan for the entire site, not just the residential. Their stormwater prevention pollution plan will be for the entire site, not just the residential portion. My, yeah, just with the conversations that I've had, not only with this developer but with other developers, I mean, realistically, the, the money, the revenues that a developer, where they're going to make the most profit is on the commercial end, not the residential end. So I would say that is unlikely, but yeah, the residential portion is going to start first. Is there any type of guarantee that the other commercial will happen? No, but it's, my, my opinion is very unlikely that only that, only that residential piece happens. The protection for the city is the PDD site standards that are already approved and in place for the, for the development as a whole.
Thank you. Thanks, Gus.
Any other public comment?
Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it over to you for any counsel.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments, Ryan?
Um, I don't have a ton. I met with these guys a little bit and Gus, for, for what you had mentioned, the, you know, there are no guarantees and this annexation is for specifically the 160-ish townhomes, single-family townhomes. And so it's, again, it gives us, it, it gives us the opportunity to have more commercial density, commercial construction on the additional, what is it, 60 something acres? But no, I, I don't have anything additional.
Chad?
Donnie? I mean, I have the same concern that Gus raised and, and I know that Brad and Jerry are here today and they might need to come to the podium. I don't want to, obviously I'm not going to bring up anything that's sensitive in terms of ongoing negotiations that they have for the land or anything like that, but one of the questions that I had was, I mean, I think the, the plan, or at least the prospective plan, or the hope, is that by the end of the year, the other properties that are part of the commercial aspects and villages will be under contract, which would make me feel a whole lot better about approving this annexation. And so I'll ask the question of you, Charlie, and perhaps of Brad or Jerry, what's, you're here for annexation, of course, this is just a public hearing and it's going to come up in our regular meeting, but we may as well ask the questions now. What's the harm of holding off on approving this annexation for the eight acres until, let's say, December? Or maybe even tonight, if we get to that point and council votes and says yes to a first read, that we don't do a second read in November and we wait until December or January, depending on when these other properties close, that give us, I don't want to say more confidence, but that certainly give us a little more assurance that the rest of the, of the commercial development, which is what we really all want to see, occurs? And I don't know if anybody can answer that in public session or if it's too sensitive and we might need to take it somewhere else, but I try to ask it as carefully as I can.
Based on conversations that I've had with the developer and obviously I'll, Jerry, I'll defer to you, I don't know that that is something that they are, at least as they've indicated to me, something that they feel comfortable in sharing in public due to current contractual negotiations and matters that are occurring with the, the other properties. Yeah, the way I, the way I view this, this parcel is, as Susan indicated at the beginning, it frees up the rest of what's already been annexed as, to allow for that additional commercial usage. Yeah, I know that they've got certain contracts and agreements and things that are in place and some that will soon be in place. Yeah, Jerry, I'm not comfortable in saying a whole lot more. I defer to you on that.
What I can tell you is that we, we are currently in an engineering phase and the engineering of the, for the groundwork and all the details of putting this all together is, is in progress. And I, I would need to stop that immediately and at this, at the same time, we would have to start looking at on a go-forward basis, what would be a worst-case scenario of if we had to shift the residential and then it would leave us less commercial. That's a whole new phase of planning and everything that we haven't had, that we haven't considered in the past. The, the PDD allows for the 160 of the, the single-family or townhomes and in looking at the, the map and the development, you, you look at, number one, where, where is the best place for that to be located? You look at also rooftops need to be in place to support the commercial. You go back and look at Stonecrest in the beginning and the 11 years to get to this point, the reason it's taken 11 years is because the rooftops were not there to support that commercial development. So in any, and I've done a lot of mixed-use research over the last six months since I've been involved in this project and mixed, the mixed-use is really dependent, if you're not next to an interstate, you're, you're dependent on those rooftops being there to support the rest of your, your mixed-use. If you're, if you're in a location that is not a real high-traffic area, that is crucial. So the, at the end of the day, if we have to give up something, it'll have to be the commercial. So, and at this point, the residential, knowing that it will be more attractive to any end users on the commercial side, we really need to get this started immediately to ensure that the rest of it happens. Just as a little side note, I've owned this 27 acres just above there, which is Village E, D, and C. I've owned that for over 10 years. You don't think I've had offers from residential developers wanting to develop that?
Oh, I bet you have.
I've turned down many, many offers. I don't, I, it's never been in my vision to see that used as residential property. When I first was introduced to this by Brad and the first site plan I saw after I had contracted to, to sell my property to Brad and Prestige, the, the first site plan I saw had this, an assisted living center on that site. 10 years ago, that was a part of my vision, so that's, that's, that's why I'm where I'm at now. Initially, I believe in this, the comprehensive plan. I lived here for 10 years, from 1985 to 1996, actually, and I've owned this property for 10 years. So I'm, I'm highly invested in this, this community and I really am going to see this through. So it's up to you to whether you think I have the credibility and the wherewithal to do this. So I'll answer any other questions you might have.
Jerry, I don't ever want you to think that we don't think you're credible. We're just trying to get the questions asked and answered.
I understand.
Okay. I mean, I definitely don't want you to go away with the wrong impression.
But this is going to require, I mean, this is, this, this, a project, this will be a $200 million project. It's going to require the full support of the city and able to make, bring it to fruition. And so, and, and from my standpoint, that's, that's very important that I'm, I'm here and I see it in order for us to, for my commitment to stay where it's at, so.
And Jerry, how, just remind us all, what's the expected timeframe to really build this all out? I mean, the desired, I know that, you know, there's nothing certain, certain, but is this a five-year project? Is this an eight-year or 10?
In, in my mind, it's a five-year project. And the, the only part of the residential that will come first will be the townhome project. And second, we, we see the, the game home facility because that then is the game changer that brings everybody else in.
Okay.
That from the hotel to the restaurants to the, the mixed-use with the, with the residential over commercial. They all, everything falls in place when that happens.
David?
I met with Jerry and Brad already, but just to reiterate, there's 166 townhomes.
160.
160 townhomes. And those are, those are being built no matter what, right? They're coming no matter what. So if we say-
That's correct because the commercial's not going to work without the additional residential.
So if we say yes, we get an extra commercial area. If we say no, we still get the houses anyway, the condos or the townhomes, whatever you want to call them, right?
That's true.
So really, all we're voting for is to see if we get more commercial space.
I even looked at it over the weekend trying to figure out what we could, what we would have to leave out. And it would probably boil down to probably the theater and the assisted living would be the two things that would be vulnerable.
Yeah. Okay, that's, I'm clear.
Oh, there are so many things going through my head right now. We, as a city, put out a economic package, package to several restaurants and restaurant chains throughout the country. We sent them a DVD about what Tegucay was all about. We enticed them to come and talk to Tegucay. And Charlie, I'm sorry, how many of those did we put out?
I think it was close to 40, between 40 and 50, probably.
Okay. So let's say round numbers, 50. So we put out, we sent out 50 DVDs and, and, and enticements to come to the city of Tegucay and talk to the city of Tegucay. And the responses to most of those were, you don't have enough rooftops. So adding 410 more rooftops is going to entice people to come here?
I don't think it's simply that. I think it's all of the recent, over the last two years, from Cameron Creeks to the Cow Atlantic Project to the, even the patio homes going across the damn road right now that are under construction. All of these, I mean, you've added and what's permitted and under construction.
And those were all told to the people.
Over 1,500 new residences, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chad.
Are there any public, any other public comments? Any other council comments? Being none, move on to item number four on the agenda is an executive session seeking legal advice.
Give me a second. We need to adjourn.
I'm sorry, I just jumped out. I'm sorry.
Yep, yep.
Jumping all over. At this point, we're going to close the public-
Yeah, public.
Public hearing for the Planning Commission and we're going to go into item number two, which is special presentations. And the first one is the York County Regional Chamber, Pennies for Progress and Chet Miller. If you would step up to the microphone and tell us all about pennies. Not my wife, just pennies.
Sorry?
My wife's name is Penny, so it's, yeah.
My name is Chet Miller. I live at 2056 Val Moro Drive, Rock Hill. What I'd like to discuss here strictly is what we're up against right now in terms of getting the word out with regard to pennies. I think most of you know here how important it is. It's a footnote to history. Whenever I spoke to some of them back, whenever we did pennies two, Tegucay was the one that really got pennies started. If it wasn't for Tegucay and pennies one, pennies would have never happened. So here's where it all started. What we've been faced with on this is a, a co-chair on, on this program, we have right now 172,000 registered voters in, in York County. Unfortunately, 38.2% of those individuals were not registered to vote at the time of the last pennies, which is over 40,000 people. One of the problems we've run into, I know over at the church I belong to, I've hit a number of people at different functions we've had there that are new and ask if they knew what pennies was, they had no idea, they were clueless, didn't even know it was on the ballot. So we have a real problem there about getting this message out to everyone that it's on the ballot for November 7th. The other problem that we run into also is the election in Rock Hill is on the 17th, which is tomorrow.
Right.
And we're a little bit concerned about voter fatigue because they get in a runoff, there's another election there in between now and November 7th. So we've, we've gone at this a number of ways to get the, the word out, being with groups like yourself. Also, we do have a card coming out the week before the election to the most likely voters that you'll see in your mail. It'll come about the last day of October to remind you about pennies and a little bit about what it's about. The other, the Fort Mill Times, we did not elect to put it in, in the Herald because they only have 10,000 copies that they deliver on a daily basis. We did elect though to go for the post-it note in the Fort Mill Times because that went to 15,000 households. The other thing we did with Comporium and with CN2, we were able to put together, and that'll start here probably within the next week, a video, it's a 30-second, you'll see it on the major networks. There'll be around 250 of those slots that we have. You'll see like CNN, Fox News, ESPN and so on, plus the social media, they've done that. That's one that's kind of, my generation is not into the social media part, unfortunately, but we have a group that, that have taken care of that. The other thing we did, especially in the, in the Rock Hill area, we were able to obtain, you wouldn't see it up here unless you drive down through that area, we were able to obtain eight billboards and we put up these 20-foot by eight-foot banners there. They were installed last weekend, reminding everybody to vote for November 7th. The other thing we've, we've done, I'll show you real quick here.
Ah.
When we were out riding around, looking at all the roads, one of the guys brought up a suggestion to me in the car, he was showing me around all the roads. I took a tour there as to what all the roads were involved with this pennies. He said, why don't we put up a sign that says you want this road approved? So that you'll see at the various locations. We, we bought 1,000 of those and now we have another 500, which are generic, you'll see those on street corners, but these already go on the roads that are being worked.
That was a good idea.
Sorry?
I said that was a good idea.
I thought it was an excellent idea on his part, whatever he brought it up.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The other point, I just go through the pennies a little bit about what's going on. As you know, the, there was quite a bit of controversy over, over the last few years with regard to what was considered cost overruns with regard to pennies. One of the things that we ran into, those of us that were involved, I was involved with, with the second pennies, we took really a, a educated guess as to how much a road would cost. We had no money to work with in terms of putting really quantitative data to it. My background's electrical, so you can imagine as electrical when you're designing a road, I wouldn't recommend it because my bridge always failed whenever I tried to do the moments. But the point was, on this one here, what's different is the county went ahead and front-loaded quite a bit of money on this to bring in a consulting firm to look at the roads that were involved, to make sure the numbers did match in terms of those roads. This pennies because the, the number of folks that we now have in the, in the county will be the biggest one yet. It'll, it's expected to bring in around $277 million. With regard to the past history, I'll go through that real quick. Pennies one, all the roads have been completed. Pennies two, we have a few that have not been completed. I've been involved with them on a couple right now. One down James Harvey Road that will be taken care of with internal generated money. Pennies three is quite a bit different. The first item on here that, in priority, is $60 million to finish those items that were in part of pennies three. If you look at the sheet I laid up there for you and then those in the audience, if you'd like, I'll leave some out there and you can have, this is the ballot, what it'll look like. We'd like you to vote yes, of course. The next item is $50 million to go in and it's broken down by, by area. By law, it has to be strictly itemized of what roads they are. And there's $50 million that's put aside here to repave some. Then the next projects, one there, what probably one that'd be interested here would be on the other side of Sutton Road, the five-lane new road to go all the way over to the railroad bridge over there. So that's, I believe it's around 20-
23.
23 million dollars. Yeah, I was going to say 27 million. That kind of gives you a quick highlight. I brought along a couple of charts that I really, if somebody were to look at, they could take a look at those. Outside that, I'll open up any questions you might have of me. One there, I did bring along a proposal that I'd like to leave behind a resolution that, that if you don't mind, I'll leave it for you for your consideration. At this point, thank you very much for having me.
Chad, I just have one question. The resurfacing of roads.
Sorry. The resurfacing of roads, that has never been on the pennies ballot in the past, has it?
Yes.
It has.
What we did, we took that one, I was trying to think it was on two. It, it was a little bit different than just resurfacing. We had a lot of areas where there, a developer went in and they put in a gravel road.
Okay.
It was a road, not what you, you can do today. Today, if a developer goes in, he has to put the mecanobird in and, and do the whole project. We went back and corrected all those. I think we got, got them all finished now. And this one here was to go in and really go after repaving roads, which is a little bit different from what we started out with, was go ahead and take it from a gravel road to a paved road. Now we're taking a paved road and fixing it, so that-
So how much of that relieves the state of their obligation to pave our roads and are we setting a precedent for future resurfacing to be added to the pennies for progress? We all know that the gas tax was just increased by the state. There's more money coming from C funds to redo the roads. Are we, we, in doing this, are we allevi, are we-
Bailing them out.
Bailing out the state of their obligation to, to pave the roads as we do pay taxes to the state now.
Okay, let, let me, first of all, we have bailed out the state because that's what pennies is. We wouldn't have all the roads we have today if we hadn't waited for the state.
I understand. I'm, I'm there.
The, but the point is, is that this does not include any C funds.
Mm-hmm.
So C funds are separate. We do have quite a bit, for example, if you take, there was a, really a bad road over here in Western York. In here, we have, I believe it was around $7 million for that road. The state's putting in an additional seven. So there, there are a number where they're co-matching those numbers, so that they've come to the, come to the party on this quite, quite a bit, too. Now, on the 50 million of the resurfacing, three-quarters of it would be done, of that money would be done by the state and there's state, some state money in there as part of that also, okay?
So there is some-
And then 25% of the county will do.
So there is some state money in this 50 million, that you're saying?
Yes. Now, this 50 million is our money, but there's money on top of that, to answer your question.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions?
I actually had one. First of all, I appreciate your time. It was a, a lot of questions I get is actually what happens to projects that are not completed? So I always appreciate you answering that. And I take 557 to work every day, so I love seeing those signs and getting, seeing the paint on the asphalt.
That's an intersection right from 49 across, by the way, that intersection right there, let me put that out real quick. This intersection right here, because over the mustard boy?
Yeah.
That's going to be completely reworked. That whole intersection, the foot war, turn lanes there.
Excellent.
That's a major surgery job.
Yes.
There are a lot of, I forget how many millions of dollars of it, it's a big price. And from here, it's five-lane and it drops to three.
All right.
You might have seen some signs there already, I believe they put a plan for that because we could.
Yes.
You want this road approved.
Yes, it was, I think, a great idea. One thing, when I was a, I have not been to an RFATs meeting in quite some time, but-
Oh, you missed a really fun one.
I'm sure, entertaining. But with all these different types of entities together, the dollars coming from different locations, one of the things that kept coming up at RFATs meeting is, how do we streamline this so that we are being more efficient with, like you were saying, we determine what the value of or the cost will be, but by the time it actually happens, it happens so many years down the road, we then, like with our projects here-
Yeah.
Then have to reallocate funds because it does just simply cost more. What kind of things are being done to try to streamline, to make sure that all these different agencies are working together?
Okay, what, what's different about this pennies here is before, we never had in there like utilities relocations. That's in the price structure here for the roads. Because whenever you get into it, like you come along and say to- Because whenever you get into it, like you come along and say, to Comporium, we're going to put this road in like down on 901, I remember that whenever the tree in the middle of the road there for a long time before that, the, the road went down, or all the new highway, but the tree was still there.
Hmm.
So you couldn't finish it. Um, that was an interesting discussion on that, that thing here some years back, but this should alleviate some of that, the air murals so to speak of like, I don't want to pay for this thing just because you want to put the road in. The other, uh, we did get into the perturbation, if you recall, with regard to oil, that we cannot control. We went sailing like for about $45 a barrel up to, I believe it peaked at around 110, $115,
Mm-hmm.
which just took the prices and went sailing like this exponentially up, it was like an E to the X curve. The, uh, the other problem, like I said earlier, was, was the estimates done was not what I, they were more qualitative than quantitative. This time here, the amount of money that was spent on this was, which was a sizable amount of money that the county put into it to go ahead and bring a consulting firm in to go do that. I should say consulting firms to do that, to try to put some sanding to the pricing so that the roads should, hopefully the roads will be a lot better this time in terms of cost estimates.
Okay, thank you.
So hopefully they're using future dollar values as part of their assessments. I mean, looking, accounting for, accounting for inflation when they talk about the pricing of these things.
Right.
And the timing associated there with, yeah.
I think, you know, wherever you look at, the, the, the big one is not so much inflation as it is the perturbation of oil on the world market.
Eh, about it.
That, you know, because right now it's like this and was, the only thing I would see is, if you look at it from a financial standpoint, was how much the Fed's going to release the quantitative easing.
Gotcha.
You know, in terms of what they had.
I see.
Okay.
Yeah, Chad, thanks for coming out.
Um, thank you.
That's good information.
One second, Chad, um, the next time we meet, as a council, will be after
The election.
the vote. So Chad has a resolution for us to support. I realize that we're not supposed to add something to our agenda. How do we handle that, um, with him wanting to have us do a resolution of support for the November 7th election, and we're not meeting until after that?
We could come in next week to do a second read for game on. No?
You're going to get hurt, Ryan.
I'm sorry?
Give, if you can give Bob just a minute to...
All right, so while Bob's thinking about that, um, can we hang this on our website? The ballot?
Most certainly.
And also the reasons for Pennies for Progress?
Yes, sir.
On, on our website, so that the, and
We'd get that done tomorrow.
potentially send that out, and maybe we could do that as far as addition to the city rewind?
So you just proposed a...
Yeah, it, it, if we can't... I, I guess you can give that to Charlie one way or another, we can figure that out.
I mean, it's a resolution, it's not anything we're really voting on. It's not really, uh...
Well, we do vote on it.
Well, I guess.
But it, and it does mention Pennies for Progress in the agenda.
Like we can...
24 hours.
Yeah, but on a Friday. Yeah.
Mayor, so, uh, since we do have an executive session coming up here in just a few minutes, um, if maybe, if counsel were so inclined to add, um, an item to that, under item four, add a section B to seek legal advice, uh, concerning, uh, adding the, uh, resolution for Pennies for Progress to the agenda, uh, so that your attorney can give you that legal advice, and as we come out, you'll have, uh, hopefully some direction there.
Okay. Chad, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Uh, for the people here, I'll leave some of these outside here if they'd like.
That would be great.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks again, Chad.
Um, item number two B on the agenda is the Comprehensive Plan Goal Accomplishments, and that's City Manager Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, members of council, we have on our, uh, website, um, the Comprehensive Plan, uh, and under that is, um, goals, achievements that have been accomplished, uh, working to try to continue to keep those updated on an annual basis. Um, there, there are way too many to list here, but it is on the website. And I, uh, if, if it's all right with counsel, uh, let me just take a, a minute or two, uh, just kind of hit some of these highlights. Um, as, as, um, council is aware, in the Comprehensive Plan, um, you know, we've got a vision statement. Um, and that vision statement, um, reflects local values derived from, um, a very robust citizen input process. And those values are safety, family-friendly, regional context, education, and entertainment and recreation. Um, there are nine key elements, um, that must be within the Comprehensive Plan, uh, per the, uh, Comprehensive Planning Enabling Act, uh, from the state. Those nine elements are population, economic development, natural resources, cultural resources, community facilities, housing, uh, land use, transportation, and priority investment. So, um, the department heads have spent some time with Susan, um, and just as they were working on our, uh, year-end annual report, um, which we're finalizing now, uh, and, and went through each of those elements to talk, you know, to, um, basically put forward what we have been, uh, what we've gotten done in regards to the Comprehensive Plan. Uh, under the population el- element, um, there were a number of goals. Uh, some of the things that we've gotten done under that as far as, uh, supporting neighborhoods, we've established, uh, the Citizens Academy. Uh, the next round actually starts this Thursday night, um, and that continues, uh, to be very popular, uh, with our residents. We've, uh, adopted, uh, council adopted and implemented the International Property Maintenance Code. Um, we've, uh, established the T G K Connect Program to promote communication between city staff and, and neighborhoods. Um, it's really, uh, for those that aren't familiar with, is a neighborhood enrichment, um, uh, program, um, that is going very well. Um, uh, we've recently implemented, um, a 311 mobile software system to provide map-based, uh, interface so personnel can access work orders, uh, in the field via mobile phones and tablets, um, to increase our efficiencies in, uh, assisting in, uh, and working with our, uh, our residents. Um, another goal manages growth, uh, we've, uh, completed cost-benefit analysis prior to annexations and, uh, proposed development for Cadence Game On Wind Haven, uh, planned development districts. Uh, completed a land use analysis to identify appropriate locations for governmental and institutional uses, uh, and updated zoning regulations to allow for mixed-use district. Another goal was promote educational excellence, um, staff does, uh, did participate as a committee member, uh, to develop, uh, work with Fort Mill School District on their strategic plan. Um, Susan Britt, uh, meets regularly with the Fort Mill School District Planner, um, at least at a minimum on a quarterly basis to develop, uh, to update in regards to, uh, development projects, uh, student population projections and the like. Um, we're now starting year two of the Extra Mile Program, uh, the Teen Volunteer Program we started last year, uh, for high school-age students, uh, to be able to volunteer within the city. Um, we continue to assist and promote Fort Mill School District and PTO events via, uh, our website and social media. Um, and we also provide, and I'm not sure how many people are aware of this, but we do provide public stormwater training, uh, education materials and whatnot for over 3,000 students in the local schools, uh, with topics including stormwater impacts and awareness, water quality, and environmental, uh, studies. Um, we also updated the Stormwater Resource Guide for Use, uh, in the local middle schools. Another goal is, uh, creating cultural and social, uh, environments. We've updated zoning regulations to allow for entertainment and activity district, uh, and staff continues to update demographic and population data as it becomes available, uh, and communicate this information, uh, on our website. Um, land use element, and I'll, I'll try to be very brief here, um, yeah, goal was promote, uh, innovative development, um, including or revising the zoning code, uh, as council did previously to adopt mixed-use district, uh, the institutional and governmental, um, or government and institutional districts. Uh, office and professional district and entertainment district, um, allows us to, to be able to, uh, try to attract different developers in those areas, um, revise the land development code to establish requirements for traffic impact analysis and mitigation agreements, uh, and streamline the plat review process, uh, promoted opportunities for entertainment facilities. Um, you know, that zoning helped bring in things like, um, Mr. Putty's, uh, which is doing quite well, uh, as well as help attract, uh, the Game On development. Uh, coordinated the annexation, um, uh, and rezoning, uh, of that Game On facility as well as, um, the, um, the Wind Haven, uh, which, uh, has the mixed-use component as well. Um, let's see, moving on, trying to be very brief, it's a lot of information, uh, been very busy. Uh, transportation element, um, increased transportation mobility, working with SCDOT and RFATs. Um, I think if, um, if T G K hadn't shown such a bright spotlight on the 160 Gold Hill Road intersection, uh, that we have to deal with on a daily basis, not sure if that would have gotten ramped up as quickly as it did. Um, and is now complete, uh, participated with the county and the Pennies folks on, uh, the, uh, construction and opening of Hubert Graham Way. Um, working with developers to include, uh, trails and additional pedestrian connections. Um, and we do have staff participating in the regional, uh, bicycle and pedestrian task force. Um, the transportation choices, obviously, uh, Mayor and Susan heavily involved with RFATs. Um, Susan from the staff perspective, and Mayor on the policy committee, um, you know, working with them on, uh, plan for a bikeable, walkable region. Uh, planning commission staff has recently undertook, as they have, uh, as, uh, the chair has recently reported to council, uh, putting together a bicycle pedestrian and trails master plan, um, and they're working hard at that, so, uh, a lot of good things there. Enhancements, uh, enhancements to public health, this one's a little difficult for us, but, uh, some of the things that actually help us achieve those goals, working with local schools to help promote events, uh, and, uh, like the, the most recent Walk the School Day, you know, things like that. Um, and providing assessments in regards to those things, um, economic development, um, element. Uh, again, counsel, I can, I can continue on, I've got a lot here. In, in the interest of time, I do want to say, yeah, thank you to staff, uh, and, uh, department heads for getting this information to Susan, uh, and Susan for compiling it for us. Uh, it, it is all currently on the website, um, under the, uh, on the Comprehensive Plan page. Um, it is a two-year, um, but it is our goal to continue to have that updated going forward on an annual basis as we, uh, round out each fiscal year, so, um, be happy to try to answer any questions counsel may have in regards to this. If there are any.
No questions, good work.
Got a lot of stuff done?
All right, item number three on the agenda is public comments, are there any public comments other than the one that we've already had from Gus? There being none, closed public comments. Item number four on the agenda is an executive session. Counsel, I make a motion, we go into executive session to seek legal advice regarding a lease agreement with Clear...
Do you want to add?
Yeah, he's going.
4B.
I'll be there.
Okay.
I'll be there. Um, legal advice regarding the lease agreement with Clear Springs for the property as part of the Catala Park project. And I would like to add to the agenda, uh, 4B, legal advice regarding the resolution for Pennies for Progress.
I think you have to do both separately.
Just need to be a motion.
I think, do you need to do that separately?
Wait a minute, hold on a second, which Pennies, this is Pennies for Progress four, right?
For, Pennies four.
Pennies for Progress four.
Um, we're okay, good.
We're okay. Um, that's my motion, do I have a second? Second by Dottie Hersey, any counsel discussion? There being none, call the question, all in favor, sing we're saying aye.
Aye.
We're in executive session, we'll be back. Ken, are we on? Counsel is back in open session, while in executive session, only the items on the agenda were discussed, no votes were taken, other than to return to open session. Which we didn't do.
I voted twice for that.
Thank you. Um, item number five on the agenda is the approval of minutes, counsel, before your, the regular city council meeting minutes for September 18th and the special city council member meeting for, um, September 25th. Are there any questions or deletions to those minutes? Hearing none, those minutes stand approved. Item number six...
I did have one comment, actually moved a little too quick. Um, and now I don't know which meeting it was, I think it was the last one, and up at the top it says that Jen was absent, and then it says she arrived at 6:01. Um, from my way of thinking, her name should be shown on the top as having attended the meeting and not being absent. She literally walked in at the pledge of allegiance for pizza.
Does anybody have any questions to, um, Dottie, does anybody have any objections to that being done? Hearing none, now those minutes stand approved. Um, item number six on the agenda, under unfinished business, um, second reading of an amendment of ordinance number 77, section 19-167, 19-206-6, excuse me, dot 6, and, uh, 19-16, City Manager Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, as the mayor just indicated, this is the, uh, second and final reading of an amendment to, uh, those sections as stated by the mayor in ordinance 77. Uh, it's your last, uh, at the, at the first reading, um, there was a, uh, change, uh, as part of the motion, uh, in regards to ground-mounted satellite dishes, those changes per that motion have been made and are reflected in your, uh, in your documents that you have before you. As counsel has given a favorable first read, uh, we would request a favorable second at this time.
Thank you, Charlie, counsel entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, motion to approve second reading of an amendment to ordinance 77, section 19-167 accessory uses, 19-206.6 private radio and television antennas and satellite reception equipment, and 19-16 definitions as presented.
I have a motion by Jennifer Stalford, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan Richard, any counsel discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Um, I just want to confirm a couple of things. First, as to the, um, tiles, what are...
Solar.
Solar panels, thank you, had a little mini stroke just then. Um, we are approving that they can only be on rooftops if we approve. And if they, if someone feels that they can't put them on the rooftop, there's some obstruction or whatever, they need to come back to the city and ask for a variance, is that correct?
That is correct.
And if they ask for a variance, it's a $350 charge.
It's a Boza, yes ma'am.
Right, okay.
Yes.
Um, as to the satellite dishes,
Mm-hmm.
we are, if we approve this, we're approving that they can go anyplace. Front of the house, on the ground, on the roof, on my house, wherever, okay, um. So that one's, that's wide, wide open, anybody can do what they want, no problems. So my concern about this is, I know that last, at the last meeting, we changed the, I think what came out of the, the change had to do with enforcement, right, that this was, you know, enforcement by complaint. Was that, that was the change, right?
Yes.
Um, I have a real concern about charging folks $350, and we may not be able to deal with it in this particular, at this time, because it's a different section, uh, or different requirement in terms of setting fees and all of that, but here's my issue. Um, we try not to over-regulate, a lot of people are environmentally conscious, solar panels are good if you like them, they're not my preference, but doesn't matter. Um, and some people may not be able to put them on the rooftop, that's okay, and, and there's good reason for it. But I think they should be able to come to the city and ask for a variance if they don't want it on the roof, and that they, you know, and they come with a good reason for it, not just because I don't like them up there, but because I have some obstruction or there's some reason why putting them on my rooftop is going to spend a whole lot of money, but they're not going to help me with my electric bill or my power grid. Uh, and from that perspective, I don't think a citizen should have to pay $350 to come to Boza for that. Uh, a- and I mean, that might be even more than, so, e- either we approve this with that exception, or we can talk about this, is, talk about Boza later, um, but, not about Boza, my apologies, Boza's fine, but about that fee, because that's a lot of money for people. And I kind of feel like I can't justify that cost. I mean, we, we don't, Boza meets, they don't get paid anyway, so it's not like they're, we're trying to pay them. It does take some staff time, I certainly understand when people come in and request variances, but for us to charge 350 bucks, I'm just not sure. So I just want to put that out there, it may not be something we can entertain today, but, you know, if, you know, if I approve this tonight, or if counsel approves it, I should say, that is something that really has to be dealt with in my mind, because that part is not fair. If, if there, if there's a limitation, we have to give them a way to at least have a fair hearing without having to pay another $350, I just, just don't feel good about that, so. That's, I'm off my soapbox now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
David, any comments?
No, we can do that another time, I think.
Yep. Ryan, Jen?
None for me.
Call the question, all in favor, sing we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Um, item number six B on the agenda is the second reading of an ordinance to amend, uh, 509, the fiscal year 2016-17 general fund budget. City Manager Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, again, tonight before you is the second and final reading of an amendment to ordinance 509, uh, specifically the, uh, FY 16-17 general fund budget. Uh, this is a customary practice, uh, that the city does, goes through, uh, at the end of each fiscal year, uh, and is recommended by the city's, uh, auditors to bring, uh, revenue and expense line items, uh, more in line with, uh, actuals that have been incurred or received, uh, through the course of the fiscal year. As counsel has already given a favorable first read, uh, staff would request a favorable second at this time.
Thank you, Charlie, counsel entertain a motion. Council entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, whoops, I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading of an amendment to ordinance 509, FY 2016-17 general fund budget as presented.
I have a motion by Dottie Hershey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan Richard. Any council discussion? There being none, call the question all in favor, sing we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Item number 7A on the agenda is the approval of a lease agreement with the Clear Springs regarding the plus or minus 12 acres of land used as part of Catawba Park. City Manager Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is really more, I guess, for the, for the public so that they understand Catawba Park is envisioned as a 61-acre recreational facility that will have athletic fields as well as, the bulk of it would have passive recreational space, open fields, trails, things of that nature. The city owns approximately 9.9 acres. Clear Springs owns plus or minus 12 and a half acres, and Duke Energy owns approximately 32 acres. At a subsequent council meeting, staff is working to bring you the lease agreement necessary for the Duke property. We've been working for quite some time with our friends over at Clear Springs and appreciate their efforts on this. It has been a long time coming. This is the, kind of the next step, so to speak. Mayor, I know you've been extremely helpful in conversations with, with Clear Springs as we've been negotiating through this thing, and much appreciated there. I, for one, am glad to finally have it to this point. I think we've been talking for 10 years plus with Clear Springs on it. So with that being said, council, we would, staff would appreciate a favorable approval.
Council, make a motion to approve the lease agreement with the Clear Springs regarding the plus or minus 12 acres of land to be used as part of Catawba Park and authorize the city manager to execute the documents.
Second.
Do I have a second? Dottie Hershey, second. This has been a long time coming. It hasn't been easy. The Springs folks have been really helpful with us getting to this point, and I can't thank them enough. Charlie, Joey, and for a matter of fact, Chris Landrick Larson, who's in the back there, while he was on council, worked really hard on this as well. So I'm really glad to see this coming to fruition. With that said, I'll call the question all in favor, sing we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Item number 7B on the agenda is the Planning Commission recommendation regarding rezoning of item number one. Chris Leonard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The Planning Commission has voted to recommend approval for the rezoning and adding tax map number 644-0000043 from RUD in the county to PDD in the city.
Thank you, Chris. Item number 7C on the agenda is the introduction of a first reading of an ordinance to amend the 8.15 plus or minus acres identified as tax map number, as Chris said, 644-0000043, to rezone from RUD in the county to PDD in the city, game on, and amend the game on PDD site plan. City Manager Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As discussed during the public hearing earlier this evening, the developer of the game on PDD has brought forward a petition for annexation rezoning of 8.151 plus or minus acres at the, I believe stated twice, tax map number, to be added to the PDD. There, again, there is no request for any additional residential density, no other changes to the PDD other than to bring this parcel into the PDD zoning and into the city's jurisdictional limits. Staff would request a favorable reading at this time.
Thank you, Charlie. Council entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the introduction of first reading of an ordinance to annex plus or minus 8.151 acres identified as tax map number 644-0000043, to rezone from RUD in the county to PDD in the city, game on, and to amend the game on PDD site plan.
I have a motion by Dottie Hershey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David O'Neil. Close second. Any council comments?
Just, yeah. Again, just confirming, we've got 160 townhouses. We're not changing anything in terms of density, recognizing that we're all hopeful that this comes to fruition as it's been presented in terms of the entire package, because the commercial is critical and we need the rooftops up front to be in place to support the commercial. So while there are no guarantees, there are no guarantees with anything, actually. We do have the PDD protection if something does go awry going forward. Clearly, the developers are hoping to move this forward 100%, and this would be a great amenity for the city.
Thank you, Dottie.
Yeah. Unbelievable opportunity for the city, guys. Thanks.
Jen?
Agreed.
David Gooden.
Everything's great.
Call the question all in favor, sing we're saying aye.
Aye.
7D on the agenda is the approval of letter of credit and performance for labor and material surety agreement for the Cameron Creek Phase 5. City Manager Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, you have before you approval of a letter of credit and performance labor and material surety agreement for Cameron Creek Phase 5. The Planning Commission has approved the final plat for this on July 10th, contingent upon the approval of the letter of credit and performance labor and material surety agreement, which is in the amount of $40822. And we would ask for council's favorable vote at this time.
Before we do that, do we need to have the amount in the motion?
It's not necessary, but you can include it, yes, sir.
So whoever makes the motion, would you please include that amount in there, please?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the letter of credit in the amount of $40822, a letter of credit and performance labor and material surety agreement for Cameron Creek Phase 5.
Motion by Dottie Hershey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jen Stalford. Any council discussion? There being none, call the question all in favor, sing we're saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number 7E on the agenda is the approval of the city entering into the state health plan. City Manager Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Very pleased to bring this to you. This is an actual requirement of PIBA, which provide, is the Public Employee Benefits Authority. They handle the state retirement as well as the state health plan. Council, if you recall during our budget workshop discussions, the concern that I had, staff had in regards to the insurance field and what's, what's happening there in the, in the private insurance sector. We had the opportunity to go on the state health plan probably 12 years ago, maybe even a little bit longer than that, maybe 15 years ago, as we're moving, the municipal, municipal association used to do our insurance. They were shutting that down. We were concerned at that time because it was a four-year commitment, and the private sector was a lot more attractive with their premiums and things of that nature. That is no longer the case, not even close. This will provide a, a good savings for the city in the, in the healthcare premiums that we pay for our group insurance for our employees. It's also good for our employees because their, their contribution towards their, towards the insurance that we provide becomes a lot less in, as a dollar figure amount. So they're, they're going to see a little bit more back in their paychecks as well by being able to make this change. State health plan does require for council to vote to allow us to enter into it with a, it's something they've always had. They, based on recent conversations with them, with a favorable approval from council tonight, they have a number of other larger cities that are kind of in the queue ahead of us. They would be able to have us on that plan as of March 1st of 2018. So we would realize some, some good savings over the final seven months of our current fiscal year and moving forward. So we would ask for council's favorable review of this at this time.
Charlie, do you have any, do you have any idea about what the potential savings are to the city as opposed to the employees?
Not, not an exact amount as of yet, and we really won't know until after enrollment because it's more of a cafeteria plan where they get to choose certain options. Right now, at a minimum, you're looking at about $50,000 over the course of the rest of this year at a minimum in savings.
I mean, and I guess the other question, you don't know the exact, but you do know that it's not more than what we've budgeted as opposed to?
Oh, it's, it's going to come in under what we currently have budgeted by at least $50,000.
And it's a good plan for the employees.
Yes, ma'am. We've, we've reviewed it at length. There are some subtle changes, but nothing astronomical. There are a lot of free preventative things that the state health plan offers that currently they would be, at a minimum, they'd be out of pocket on a copay that's at no charge. So it's, it's, it's a really good plan. And we would be, it's a, it puts us in a larger pool.
Yep.
So our experience modifier doesn't hit as hard.
Yep.
When you're in a pool of 90 people versus, that we are now versus, yeah, a couple thousand people.
Yep.
That experience definitely helps a little bit.
That's good.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Charlie. Council entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute any and all documents with the Public Employee Benefits Authority that are necessary to establish the city's membership in the South Carolina State Health Plan.
Motion by Dottie Hershey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan Richard. Any council discussion? There being none, call the question all in favor, sing we're saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number eight on the agenda is the city manager's report. Charlie?
Yes, sir. National Night Out was held a couple weeks ago, very well attended. Would like to thank our police department, fire department for their efforts there, putting on a wonderful event. Also Coffee with a Cop, if you were out there, probably the largest crowd I've seen for that. Obviously, do a good job of tying it with the Walk to School Day, but big crowds of adults hanging out in the gardens, interacting with our police officers. And I would like to thank Sergeant Burns, and like to commend him for his efforts in helping really kind of spearheading and coordinating both of those events. Fall Festival's coming up this Saturday, be upstairs and out in the parking lot from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. 123 vendors, including 11 food vendors and a beer garden from the Shore Club. We do have live entertainment on the stage throughout the day, finishing off with Sonic Rewind. Big free kids area. Again, I did say free to come and bounce around in the blowups and all that kind of stuff, so. Costume contest for the kids starts at 1:00. Lions Club's doing the pumpkin patch again. Should be a great time. We look forward to seeing everyone out there. Parking, do not drive up to the clubhouse unless you're coming up to play golf. And I understand they have a fundraiser tournament that day, so either walk up or park at Rundy, park at TK Elementary, ride the shuttles, they'll be riding and running all day. The Chamber of Commerce, we've been pushing some stuff out here end of last week on this, just so everybody's aware. The candidates forum will be next Monday, October 23rd. It's going to start at 6:00 PM with a meet and greet, and then the forum will begin at 6:30 PM. And I believe Katie just recently shared this, I think maybe Thursday or Friday of last week. If you want to submit questions for the Chamber of Commerce to consider asking or directing to the candidates, you submit those directly to the chamber. That information is on our website and social media as far as where those go, those questions. They do not come to City Hall or city staff, they go directly to the chamber. Election Day, November 7th, that'll come about before our next meeting. All polling centers will be open, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. According to the election commission there for York County, there are over 7,000 registered voters in the city. Get out and vote, folks. Get out and vote. And last but certainly not least, city offices will be closed on Friday, November 10th in observance of Veterans Day. And that's all.
Charlie, will it be a Veterans Day event?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Assume at the memorial garden as usual? Great.
Way to take David's fire for his comments.
Yeah, right.
Good job.
Okay, it's election time, right? Same.
Charlie, I echo what Dottie was saying. I know I mentioned it during the last council meeting about the cost of the appeal being quite costly and could be prohibitive for some residents. If there was a way for us to have this reevaluated, I know it might have been maybe even last year, you mentioned the cost that the city has to incur. Forget time, it was publishing announcements and such.
We have legal notices that are required as well as official mailings we have to put out, signs and things of that nature. Be happy to put together a cost analysis on that and send it out to council.
That would be really great, thanks.
Not a problem.
And the other thing, since we were talking about transportation, is back in June, we had the demand response transit presentation made to us.
Yep.
And I was curious, I've had some residents ask when that survey will be sent out to them, and I know you said it was going to be sent out to council first after staff had created it, but what is the timeline for that?
Let me, let me circle around with staff at our department head meeting in the morning and see where things are there.
All right, thank you.
Ryan, any questions to Charlie?
Nothing.
Dottie?
Jen's covered both, both the fees and demand transit, so thanks, Jen. I believe, Charlie, next month at our November meeting, the Planning Commission might bring forward the potential or proposed changes to the ordinance relative to fencing. Not fencing the sport, but fencing, you know, fencing.
I know that is something they're working on.
I, I think at planning, they said it, but, and, well, Chris is here, but whenever, whenever it's brought, whether it's November or later, could we also please bring pictures of the types of fencing that are being discussed, just so that we understand what a shadow box is or a privacy fence is or what have you? Because I was a bit confused after the planning meeting. I'd also like to echo the mayor's comments about Clear Springs and how much they've worked with us to help us get the Catawba Park going and, and the land, so that's really terrific. And also, again, thank, thanks the police department and fire department for National Night Out and Coffee with a Cop. It was a beautiful Friday morning, which added to so many people coming out. And I had these two little boys who were sitting on the rocks enjoying their hot chocolate. And I said, well, what, boys, what time does school start? And they're like, well, I don't know. And it was about 8:00, 7:40. I said, I guess it must start around 8:00. And they're like, yeah. You know, and then some parents came by and said, no, they're late. So it was cute, but, you know, and funny, and, well, at least to me, maybe you had to be there. But I enjoyed it, so thanks to our great police and fire departments. That is it for me. Get out and vote.
Thank you, Dottie. David?
Are we on city manager's report or are we on council comments?
We're on, we moved on. Got to stay, stick with us here.
I think we're on city manager's.
Yeah, any questions?
No questions for the city manager.
Perfect. Item number nine on the agenda is public comments. Are there any public comments? Don't all jump up at once. Item number 10, we're going to go to council comments. Ryan, would you like to start us off?
I'll be brief, get out and vote. Pennies for Progress, it's done a lot for the city, for the area. Stand behind it 100%. So figure out a way to spread the word, get people to approve that. When they look at it, they just see 1%. It's the same 1% that they've been spending for eight years now?
More than that, yes.
Yeah, so it's, it's no increase, it's just the standard. So let people know, vote yes there. And aside from that, that's all I got.
I also support pennies, and it was not that we, as a group or collective, did not. It was because we cannot have this added during our agenda for FOIA reasons. So the other thing I wanted to just say is the beautification committee has 1:00 PM Thursday meeting in the lower level meeting room of Glennon Center. But we also have a workday on the 24th at 8:00 AM, and we'd love to see some new faces.
Hey, Jen. Dottie? Dottie?
Just like my fellow council members, I also support pennies for progress. Without it, we wouldn't have Hubert Graham Way and the lovely expansion at 160 in Gold Hill, so get out there and vote for that. It's an important project, I certainly support. That's it, Mayor.
Yes, also, I support pennies for progress, and on Saturday, November 11th, which is the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month, is Veterans Day, and we will have a small ceremony in the living memorial gardens, like we do every year. Shouldn't last more than 20 or 30 minutes. And the day before, on the 10th, we've been invited, all the veterans have been invited to the TK Elementary School, which we also do every year, and it's a lot of fun. If you're a veteran, you ought to go, because those kids are really, really good. It's, it's a really joyful thing to do every year, so.
Nice.
That's on the 10th, the morning before.
Thank you, David.
Hey, real quick, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Something I forgot. Fall Festival, we're actually taking both shred trucks for our shred company out to Fall Festival, and we're hosting a free shred event.
Yeah.
For Fort Mill Athletics, so I know you're about to vacate office, if you have a lot of documents you need to get rid of.
[laughing]
It's free, so, but no, for everybody else, spread the word. Come out, minimum donations, whatever you're comfortable with, you know, we're just, just trying to support Fort Mill Athletics and the wrestling team, so come on out.
Good job.
The problem with that is I can't drive my car up here with the amount of documents I have.
Yeah, true.